All right. Calling back to order, the Board of Education, meeting for Sacramento Unified School District. We're gonna go to item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someday.
All right, going to item 4.2, Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Monday, November 20th at 12:00 PM and Wednesday, November 22nd at 1:00 PM. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna go to item 4.3, Stellar Student Introduction by Board Member Villa.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two stellar students tonight from Elder Creek, and they were nominated by their principal, and they're both here. You're welcome to join if you'd like to, if you don't have to. Okay, so first is Buck Feng, and he is in sixth grade. Buck Feng is a creative and hardworking student whose dedication to his studies is inspiring. Buck not only excels academically, but also approaches challenges with a unique and imaginative perspective. What sets Buck apart is not only his intelligence, but a genuine gratitude for his opportunities his family has provided him. His gratitude reflects a humble spirit to add to an exceptional work ethic. Elder Creek is a much better school for having Buck in its student body. Congratulations. And our second stellar student is, I want to say this correctly, Naladi Kalodi-Hart, and she is in fifth grade. She is described by her teachers as a student who shows both maturity and responsibility not usually seen in students of her age. She is very intentional in her learning and expects to perform at a high level in class. She's an active learner who does not sit back passively. Love that. She doesn't hesitate to ask for clarification and/or help when needed and produces high-quality work at all times. Elder Creek is very lucky to have a student of her caliber. Congratulations. You're welcome to say anything if you'd like to your family. Oh, microphone, there you go. Push the microphone so we can hear you better. Thank you.
I would like to thank my teacher, Mr. Willett, for teaching me all this stuff.
Awesome.
I would like to thank my teacher, Mrs. Ying, for teaching me decimals.
That's a good one. So we have two certificates, and we're gonna come down with you guys and take a photo, if that's okay? Congratulations. Standing right there, oh, here. Well, come over, come over here, come over here.
Okay, item 5.0, Announcements of Actions Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Rhodes. There's one announcement coming out of closed session this evening, and it'll be read by Interim Superintendent Allen.
Thank you, Anne. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointments. By a vote of seven to zero, the board approved the appointment of Timothy Rocco as Chief Information Officer.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. We have no change to agenda. So move, second. Roll call. All in favor, I mean. Make it easy, make it easy. Aye. Okay, moving on to 7.0, the motion passes. Moving on to 7.0, Public Comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have three speakers signed up.
Beautiful.
First is Madison Cloke, followed by Ally Miller, and then Sarah Bailey.
Hi, I'm Madison Cloke. I am a third-year law student at McGeorge, and I just wanted to make you guys aware of a change to a California Senate bill, and that would be California Senate Bill 323 for Comprehensive School Safety Plans. The Senate bill requires schools to have a site safety plan, but the amendment to the bill now requires that schools provide additional guidance or plans for any students with disabilities on their campuses. And so this means that if students are unable to walk out to a certain location that is in the school site safety plan, then the school is required to develop an alternative plan specific for that student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name's Ally Miller. I'm also a third-year law student at McGeorge. I would like to bring awareness in support of the information and brief studies that the California School Boards Association has raised. SAC City has, under Assembly Bill 2291, the Safe Place to Learn Act, adopted in 2018. In the aftermath of the pandemic, members have noted a concern about student struggles with mental health. SAC City has incorporated anti-bullying measures that can support mental health and wellness and boost academic achievement, provided LEAs that are required to adopt bullying prevention policies and practices. Following COVID and the shift from online to an in-person school has been a difficult transition for many students, and the recent reports that they have conducted for school safety in bullying and cyberbullying has raised awareness in this, and I hope to see that continue in SAC City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Welcome.
My name is Sarah Bailey, and I am a classified employee, and there's some really good news to talk about. I think it's happening a little later. Right now, I wanted to talk about something a little less warm and fuzzy, and that's some safety issues connected to transportation. I work, I'm an instructional aide, I work in an SDC classroom with some of our most vulnerable students, special day classroom. And last meeting, you all approved, I think it was last meeting, a resolution for National Bus Safety Week? That sounds lovely. At our school, we have zero buses coming to it. We have contracted workers that come pick up our students. We have nine kids in the class that I work in. We have five different drivers that come to pick them up. And my comment is not a critique of the character of the folks that are driving. They are just trying to make a living. They're working really hard. I think this is probably, for most of them, one of many jobs. What's glaringly apparent, though, is there's not a lot of thought around safety put into this plan. None of the cars are marked. They don't have a magnet on the side of them that indicate that they are with SCUSD. So they're driving up what looks like an Uber car. Most of them have Uber stickers on them, because that's also their other job. They, there's not a specific way that they drop folks off or pick them up. Some of them, some of the drivers will walk students all the way up to the school. Some drop them off as they slowly are driving away, watching to make sure they make it to the front of the school at pickup time. Some, some folks want to stand across the street and have us send our kids across a street, and you know what pickup time is if you are a parent or have ever been to a school at pickup time. It is really chaotic. They're not clearly marked that there are drivers. Sometimes they need to have a sub. We don't know who those people are. It feels so unsafe and so scary. We had a driver one time take one of our kids, put them in the car, and come back and get a different kid. So one of our kids was in the car all by herself. It's just, it's not a matter of when something, if something's gonna happen bad, it's when. It's just not sustainable.
Thank you.
If we could look at getting our bus drivers back, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have any other public?
No more public comment.
Thank you, everyone who provided public comment today. We're gonna move on to item 8.0, Communications, and we're going to go to S-C-T-A. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Allen. As Thanksgiving week is coming, we wanted to say how grateful we are for the recent settlement with SEIU. I think that's wonderful. We're, you know, grateful that the logistics of settling our agreement and getting people, you know, what they deserve out of that agreement is happening, and we're almost done with resolving our last agreement. And we appreciate you nominating parents to the Community Schools Committee at our last meeting. That was a very great step to have. We still have, well, we are happy that we got our training, our job descriptions created for the Training Specialist and the Coordinator here at the Center of the Center, but now we need to post those job descriptions and for hiring people. And then we need to start having those committee meetings to really get started on the, on the work to engage our communities and to get these transformative community schools up and running. We, let's see, we've got a proposal from the district for our new bargaining. And we, that was great. We look forward to, I don't say that was great. The proposal was not great. It wasn't, you're not trying to take away pay from us. That's an improvement, for sure. But it's something that we can work with and work on. We have our next bargaining session on November 29th, and we're looking forward to that. We just have a lot of heavy lifting in front of us. We have a lot of issues in special ed. We have a lot of issues in, in community schools. We have a lot of issues in just the basic functioning of our district and a lot of training and a lot of recruitment and things to work on. So thank you for your time tonight, and do enjoy some time with your, your family this week. Thank you.
You as well, you as well. We're gonna go to S-E-I-U. Welcome. No problem, no problem. I see you have your bodyguards with you.
Good evening, guys. I just want to personally thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart for our classified members. Each and every one of you have stood by our side. We've had long, serious conversations. We've had debates. We've had thoughts. We shared stories. This is the best bargaining our team has ever had with the district, as far as I'm concerned, and I have been on tons of bargaining teams and meetings. It was a pleasure working with the people on the district side of bargaining. There was no name slamming. There was no nasty remarks. We could debate nicely and friendly. There was no people walking away. It was just totally awesome. It was a great experience, and I hope that bargaining continues the same way it does when we go into full contract. But again, I want to thank you because our members are no longer at poverty level. So hats off to all of you, and my members are sending you all their love too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you guys, do you guys want to say anything? Okay.
She said everything.
Right, you guys are here to enforce. I appreciate it.
There is one thing. Hi.
Hello, hello.
Last time I was here, you had more than 20 kids up here, and one of them said hello to you.
Yes.
And you were really happy about that.
Yes.
I think it's wonderful that you start the meetings with stellar kids. To have people up here that you recognize is a fantastic thing. It's the perfect way to start any meeting. Thank you.
I appreciate that. It's always good to be seen. All right, going to the next group, TCS, Teamsters or UPE, if you're in the building. Okay, we're going to see the SAC. Are they in the building today? Do you have anything? No? Okay. The CAC, Community Advisory Committee, it's called, the District English Learner Advisory Committee? The LCAP Committee? Oh, LCAP? Come on down.
All righty, let me get my notes. Dr. Eldridge. So let me start by saying, we welcomed our newest, our new executive director, Dr. Ed Eldridge, who I believe is back there somewhere. Yes? So that is our executive director. So it was wonderful to meet him. He is steering us in a direction that is very data-driven. So we dove kind of into a lot of the data of the LCAP and the matrix of it, found some interesting components. We also, I'm trying to think, sorry, because I don't have my notes. So we, we did want to start a new component. When we start doing our updates to the school board, we wanted to introduce a new component to that, whereas at the end of it, we open it up for you all to ask us questions so that we engage a little bit more with the school board members. We would ask that you keep those questions limited to our presentation and not so broad, just to the LCAP. If we do not have the answers as stakeholder members, then we will lean on Dr. Eldridge to find those answers, and we will address it in our next presentation. We're also gonna get better about making a presentation at every board meeting, if at all possible. We discussed more, as I said, the matrix of it and the data of it. It was my first PAC meeting, because I was newly appointed. So I also, it was an opportunity for me to meet some tremendously motivated people within our district. Those parents and community members are amazing and so intelligent. They're a great group of people. So you all did a great job in appointing them. Thank you. And we're looking to partner with the other parent advisory committees to do a parent engagement opportunity right around the holidays. So we discussed that briefly as well. Are there any questions? In keeping with what we would like to establish, do you have any questions or comments that I can take back to the PAC?
There, there are none now. We appreciate your time.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Okay, and then we have the BAAAAB. BAAAAB, baby. How you doing, Terrence?
It's Thursday. It's almost a week off, so I'm blessed. Good evening. We're actually, right now, as a BAAAAB, we have a communications ad hoc committee. So it's really in line with what we're doing right now, which is trying to finish our transition from our previous executive committee, obviously the loss of the very talented and knowledgeable and experienced and brilliant Dr. Fisher, transition to further work and collaboration with Danny Rallary, who's our liaison, but also board members there transitioning out to other spaces due to personal and professional commitments. So we're really trying to be strategic about how we increase our outreach, how we better tell our stories, but also how we articulate the work. It's not new work. It's ever-present, and we're really trying to be the ones to spearhead and spark a revolution in outcomes. To that end, there is a group that is an offshoot of what we started here in Sacramento. There's a group in Berkeley. At that group, I attended a meeting in June. They had a celebration, and their superintendent is ever-present. And I really think this speaks to the importance of having cabinet-level authority or representation in the space so that we can accelerate outcomes and answers and the efficiency by which we receive information. But also, we've had an ask by a board member to possibly be a liaison. So I think that the more cross-sectional representation we have in our space, the better informed we can be and the better we can inform our public and our constituents that we represent. We obviously always look forward to continue to work with you guys. You know, unfortunately, if I'm gonna be transparent, those Fs that we gave you guys a few months or years ago, they're still present. So we're always looking to improve the, the report card for our district and, and obviously the outcomes for our students. So we, we come with open arms, but also with vocal advocacy, unapologetic advocacy, because, you know, our kids don't always have a tomorrow. And, you know, sometimes their tomorrows are not that bright, so we're looking to improve that. So thank you in advance.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, we're gonna go to special presentation, item 9.1, Approved Resolution Number 3367. And we're going to turn it over to Member Singh. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I was asking, never mind. I have some thoughts, but I'll, I'll leave my remarks after I read out the resolution. So I know I tried to condense this a little bit. Thank you, Danielle, for helping to frame these. It is Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month, and not only here in Sacramento, but this is a statewide-recognized resolution or month. So I'll read some important parts, and then I'll provide my remarks later. So, "Whereas November marks the birth of the founder of the Sikh faith, Gurunanak Devji, and Sikhs around the world commemorate November by initiating Nagar Kirtans, holding a kundparth, which is a non-stop reading of the Guru Granth Sabh, and continue the tradition starting by Gurunanak Devji of Lhongr." Lhongr is a foundational revolutionary space where Sikhs come together to discuss the revolutionary ideas from the house of Nanak, a safe place for all oppressed people of the world to share a meal with the Kalasai and learn about a revolutionary struggle so that they too can take part. Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to the political, social, cultural, economic vibrancy of the United States, the fifth-largest religion in the world, and the majority of those who live in California that are Sikh live right here in the Central Valley. It's also important to note that the Sikh genocide began on November 1st, 1984. Systemic and orchestrated genocidal violence was perpetrated against Sikhs by the government of India, and the Sikh genocide lasted over three days, and over 30,000 Sikhs were brutally murdered or killed in their homes. In June of 2023, the California Legislature unanimously, without any opposition, passed Resolution Bill AJR 2 condemning November 1984's anti-Sikh violence in India as a genocide. Many Sikhs came to the United States, including here, to the Sacramento region as political asylees, and are descendants of genocide survivors after escaping persecution. Unfortunately, innocent Sikhs in India and around the world, such as Jhiktar Singh Johar, have been unlawfully abducted and continue to face unlawful detention, torture, and have their human rights trampled upon under draconian and fascist laws. Sacramento City County, Sacramento City Unified School District is amongst the most diverse districts in California and the United States. It's committed to educating our communities about the world's religions, the value of diversity, acceptance, and the culture of mutual understanding. Today, the Sacramento City Unified School District seeks to further that diversity of its community and afford all residency opportunity to better understand, recognize and appreciation, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Whereas recognizing the state-sponsored violence that targeted Sikhs across India in '84 is an important and historic step towards justice, accountability, and reconciliation, which should be an example to other governments. Therefore, be it resolved that Sacramento City Unified School District condemns 1984 November anti-Sikh violence in India as genocide, and therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District is encouraged to acknowledge November as Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month and support ethnic studies that recognize the Sikh community and its history, and therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District is committed to protecting the rights of Sikh students and Sikh employees to practice their faith with the Articles of Faith, such as the Geskara, Ganga, Kirpan, and Kishara intact. Therefore, be it resolved that Sacramento City Unified School District recognizes November as Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Singh. Do we have any public comment on the topic?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any board comment before we vote to pass? Okay, we have Member Kayada.
So thank you very much, Member Singh, for bringing this important resolution before us today. Very excited to be passing this tonight. I would like to request, as I have with other resolutions, that when we commit to action, we commit to fully embracing it with respect to, I think it was the second-to-last be-it-resolved sentence around the Articles of Faith. As many know, one of those would be the Kirpan, which is, I don't want to, how do you describe it?
Ceremonial dagger.
Ceremonial dagger, thank you. I want to make sure that we are clear with our students and with our faculty what the expectations are so to consider kind of bringing back further board action to clarify what is permissible, what should, you know, how, how is the process handled? If a student were to produce the Kirpan, you know, what would be the consequences, kind of having a set discipline, but also making sure that it's actively protected, right, just as this resolution seeks to do.
Thank you, Member Kayada. And so this, we will have conversation with staff around, around that, and tonight we will vote on the resolution. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution? Move. Do we have a second? Second. Student preferential? Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayada?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. But before we go to the next item, Member Singh will say a couple of words, and the floor is yours.
Cool. I just want to say a few words, and then also I know have a few community members who might want to say a few words, and then we can take a photo, because I, we have three of these, printed three of these. So I actually want to thank the board, everybody here, the staff and the community, the Sikh students, the staff and families. I really think it's a big deal that this, this board recognizes you and sees you, and I don't always want to say it's because I'm a Sikh and I'm up here. I think that through mutual understanding and through just building relationships, that I think we're also constantly learning about each other and the communities that we come from. And I'm also proud that we have a resolution that actually recognizes, appreciates, and raises awareness. So I just want to thank you all for actually seeing me and understanding how important this is, and when someone from our community brings something, how important it is to recognize us and see how difficult it actually may be for us to be up here to speak about genocide and speak about issues that continue to affect our community. So try not to be shaky, but I really do appreciate all of you for, for doing this. So I have two, I think I have two community members who might just want to say a few words, so y'all can come up. I don't have to call you out by name. All right, well, that's Robin. Come on up, Robin.
Hi, everyone. My name's Robin Rehill. I'm a community member and a local Sikh activist or organizer, as you will. I want to thank this board for passing this resolution with the genocide language included. Throughout this week, we've seen different boards take out the language or water it down where our pain and our community members' trauma is resurfacing as we're feeling like we're not seen. And as President Rhodes said earlier, it's great to be seen, but you can't appreciate us or be aware of us if you're not aware of our collective trauma. Many of the Sikhs in this community came fleeing, fleeing genocide and came with political asylum. And a lot of community members throughout the United States and Canada, especially in Sacramento, were warned by the FBI that our lives are in imminent danger for raising awareness around 1984. So I just want to thank this board and Trustee Singh for bringing this resolution. Thank you.
Do we have another person?
Is anyone, okay, perfect. All right, I think I just want to present this to the folks who are here and then give a shout-out to Jakarta Movement, who helped work on this resolution, so.
Do we all go down, or?
Yes, let's all go down.
Okay.
If I stand in the front, then I cover everybody else, so.
We'll find the windows.
I'll be honest, I don't want to stand in front of people, so.
Thank you, Member Singh. Now we're gonna go to item 10.1, our public hearing of AB 1200. Happy times. The floor is yours. Oh. I hope you're okay.
I was actually shocked.
Good evening, President Rhodes, members of the board, interim Superintendent Allen. It's a pleasure that we are here tonight to present on AB 1200 Disclosure: Approval of the Agreement Between Sacramento City Unified School District and Service Employees International Union. On behalf of our Chief Human Resources Officer, Dr. McCarron, who wishes that she could be here tonight, apologizes, she's been traveling this week working with the Council of Great City Schools. She's been as far away as Alaska and now in Oakland. But she really wanted to make sure that she thanked the board, the superintendent, our district negotiations team, and SEIU's negotiation team for the support that allowed us to work together in partnership to come to this really historic agreement. It's something that I think that we're all very proud of. This agreement does close negotiations for the 2022-2023 school year. Additionally, this agreement closes negotiations for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2025, except for reopeners in the following items. Article 6, compensation, including salaries for the 2023-2024 and 2024-2025 school years. Article 16, we're going to continue conversations around safety. Article 3, union rights. Article 8, hours. Article 13, transfers. Article 14, performance evaluations. Article 17, professional growth. Article 18, grievance procedure. Article 19, disciplinary process. Article 20, layoff. And Article 24, contracting out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, President Rhodes, members of the board, interim Superintendent Allen. This is key provisions continued focusing on the compensation items, the first being a 10% salary schedule increase retroactive to July 1, 2022, for all SEIU job classes. There's also an additional 6% retroactive salary schedule increase to July 1, 2022, and this is for specified job classes listed in the agreement. Additionally, through the implementation of those first two bullet points, it would effectively establish a minimum hourly rate of $18 an hour beginning July 1, 2022. And lastly, the establishment of minimum wage of $20 per hour effective July 1, 2024.
This takes a quick summary look at the AB 1200 fiscal impact. For the 23-24 fiscal year, total estimated cost for all funds of $23.3 million. This does include a portion of the one-time retroactive costs for 22-23. And then for 24-25 onward, an estimated ongoing cost of about $12.6 million for all funds. Lastly, the AB 1200 document in front of you, as well as in the packet, does include the adjustments from the SETA AB 1200 presented on September 7, as well as the updated beginning balance from our unadded actuals. So just wanted to disclose that. And lastly, this is a high-level look at our fiscal year, the fiscal impact of the multi-year projections. Based off of those figures, you can see in a pinkish color is the SETA AB 1200 projected adjustments. Just below that is the projected SEIU adjustments, and you can see how that flows through our multi-year projections and ultimately the ending fund balances for each of those three years. And with that, that takes any questions and answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
We do not.
We do not. Do we have any board comment on this topic? We do. Member Singh.
That was an accident? It's been flashing. I was telling you to turn it off.
Well, say something now then.
I want to thank staff for, it's always a good one. I really do. I want to thank staff, and I know how hard Consey's worked with, to really get this done, and it's been many sessions, and all of you have been at those sessions, and I just want to thank you all for putting in the work and getting us here. I think with folks who came up earlier, you can see the level of emotion that this carries and us making folks whole and getting to a position where they can really focus on our kids and get back to supporting our children is going to be so influential and impactful for the community, so thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. And Member Kayata?
So I just want to say how happy I am to be able to be approving this agreement tonight. You know, when I was running for election, I talked to several members of SEIU here represented, and there was a feeling that, you know, often they're overlooked to our teachers, and to me, that's never been the case. I was very, very proud to have a CIU's endorsement, and to all the CIU members, I see you. I see you every day, and I'll continue to focus on recognizing the impact you have on our students. Getting to a $20 minimum wage, that's huge. Getting an extra salary adjustment for our aides in particular, who we know we have trouble staffing, just huge. And to everyone, thank you for everything you do for the district. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Is anyone else who wants to hop in the queue? Okay. So I'll just say very quickly, this actually recognizes the importance, the important work that our SEIU members do every day. I live right in the south side of the city, and I always tell people that SEIU members, a lot of them are my neighbors, I went to school with them, a product of the district, and so to see us uplift so many people is amazing, and I'm look forward to the work that we can continue to do together as a board, as a district, and as just a collective. So this is a beautiful moment, and let's get it done. All right, we have a motion to pass this motion. Second?
Second.
Okay. Student preferential?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Emphatically, yes.
Member Kayata?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Yes.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Yes.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Okay, now we're gonna go to the next exciting item on the docket, 11.1.
I know somebody has to get to a dinner, but there is a mistake in the agenda. I'm supposed to be here for an hour.
Oh, yeah? Well, whatever's on the agenda and then actually put out to the public is what we have, so sir, you do not have an hour.
Oh, okay, I'll take 10 minutes then. Thank you again, President Rhodes, members of the board, Superintendent Allen. Today, I'm giving a Facilities Master Plan Implementation and Construction Update. You've heard recently from Nathaniel Browning about the Facilities Master Plan. There's a lot of action inside of it, and today I'm going to share what those action items have resulted in. Again, everything we are building, especially in facilities, is based around equity, and we continue to use that as a guiding principle for the work we do. I want to review that the voters and board have authorized the date for the bond construction program. Since 2012, voters have authorized $1.164 billion. From 2012 to 2021, the district averaged about $42 million spent a year. But since August of 2021, the department has built, or we're in design to build, or are building, almost $380 million invested into our properties. That's averaging almost $90 million. That should be just through summer of '25. You'll hear as we continue future projects, as we continue the work on Measure H and the $750 million. Measure Q projects, we are wrapping up Measure Q. The last bond sale in 2021 included board-authorized projects, and you can see that we are almost done, and the bold-faced ones are the ones we are currently either building or will be building over the summer and fall of 2024. Review of some of the projects for Measure Q are historical Luther Burbank new pool, Einstein's new gym floor, Elder Creek received a new hardcore, a new playground shade structure, and the first-ever all-weather track at an elementary level that encourages community use and PE and athletic use. Other Measure Q projects, again, Hiram Johnson was our big project in 2022, finishing up that stadium. We continued through security fencing projects with Measure Q, wrapping up seven sites last summer, and Didion was another project that we did hardcore playground shade structure. Measure H has had a new set of dollars and expectations put on it. These are the current projects as part of the bond sale in 2022 for $225 million. All of those projects are currently in some level of progress. Just reminder, some of the things we've done in the last couple of months with Measure H is the ground has started to be moved with Measure H dollars. Kimball Chavez, we moved an entire campus about 500 feet south, but it's still there, but it was entirely moved and made room for a brand-new campus. Site underground utilities are already installed on that property, and we are beginning to winterize it with lime treatment of the soil and beginning the building pads. We anticipate full DSA approval, Division of State Architect approval, for this project, where the buildings will start going up in the spring in February. Oh, excuse me, sorry. The Isador Cohen fence is currently in construction as we speak and hopefully wrapping up in the next two weeks. We appreciate that we have been invading their space, removing concrete, installing fence during the school day, and we have not had one complaint or concern at least shared with us from the teachers that are going through this. They know the importance of this work going on, and I hope they're going to see the fruits of this labor be worth it here in the next couple of weeks. I want to take an opportunity to show you something from one of our big projects at Nicholas. The rendering on the left, you're standing in what we are calling Main Street. It's the main corridor going down through all the classroom wings. It is a rendering I have shared in the past through board communications. It's been our kind of scene for the last 12 months. We see these AI pictures of what could be. I'm standing and taking a picture in the same direction from Main Street. The dirt is being moved. The building is coming. The department has also had to build ESER projects in the last 18 months. We installed 14 outdoor shade shelters to allow mitigation efforts for COVID-19. Outdoor lunch can be served there. It's used for classroom experience. They are incredibly popular with the principals that have them, so much so that I believe they have shared it at their principal meetings, and now it's one of our highly requested. When's my turn coming? Right now, ESER has funded those projects, and ESER funding has been spent. Some of the other ideas, or excuse me, projects we've done to mitigate the effects of COVID-19 has been improved ventilation. Our projects added ventilation to large spaces, such as a majority of our middle-school gyms that did not have any shade shelters, and introducing revolutionary technology in schools, HVAC control systems. It's allowing us to use CO2 sensors and sensors that measure particulate matter to control how much outdoor ventilation is moved into spaces, and it's all done automatically. We have 23 schools receiving that work, and it'll go through the summer. Implementation. We need to ensure that we follow protocols obtaining ser-, oh, excuse me. In August of 2021, our department started with all-new leadership, turnover in several other positions, and a need to reinvent how we service our schools and our community. We need to ensure we properly follow protocols in obtaining services, such as architects, construction managers, and Mr. Browning has worked to establish our CBOC for Measure H. Expectations need to be set. We built design standards and master specifications, a document almost 1,000 pages long. We also invited staff and labor partners to help create the first draft of a furniture catalog so we can begin the process of replacing old student furniture in the district through our projects. Of course, using the equity data from the Facilities Master Plan to ensure we push projects to areas traditionally underserved, we also make sure school construction business practices are used in our thinking, such as knowing when our buildings become eligible for state modernization money, so we're getting a higher value for our bond dollars. Finally, we need to have a routine checklist and let staff to follow the projects and the processes through consistency, and it allows us to stay on schedule. I want to make sure while we go through whatever we're going through, that we thank staff in the Facilities Department that are traditionally behind-the-scenes staff, Lori, Isabel, Tori, Morgan, Anthony, Molly, Elena, all these people help with the bond program. They make sure that we are staying on schedule, keeping us on task, and I guarantee you they're not watching right now, but we'll make them watch the video tomorrow in the staff meeting. Educational specifications was a major component of the Facilities Master Plan that you board approved in 2021. It gives us six directives, guides us in our designs to meet expectations of the community and of this board and the projects. Our new schools will meet all six pedals, and our modernization should strive to match as many as possible. I want to go through each pedal and show the action item it created in our department and the result. The learning environment pedal included the requirement for flex furniture, allow spaces to be used in a variety of ways. Here you can see a snapshot of the furniture catalog created by the committee that we are using for Einstein and Cal Middle mods, Alice Bernie, Matsuyama Campus Renewals, and all happening this summer, and this will also be used for our brand-new schools coming next summer. Also in the pedal, this is a rendering of the future Chavez-Kimball classroom area, housing both an outside and interior collaboration space. The plan is showing exactly how it's going to be built. Rendering is pointed out the way you're reviewing it, and the plan shown is what the building will look like. Individualized support is an increasing support being asked of districts. At Chavez-Kimball, we have the wellness suite for individual student support, but also breakout spaces inside the campus for quick breakout sessions. Shown on the left is the wellness suite for counselors, psychologists, speech therapists, any other special services needed, and will be located in the admin building. The breakout space is located at both levels of the new Chavez-Kimball in the center of the campus. Safety and security. At all of our new schools, the current schools receiving, and the current schools receiving the fence projects, the goal is to use and obtain a single point of access during the school day, requiring check-in at the office. This image of the new Nicholas shows that we can electronically control gates with timers and badging that allows access for staff but restricts visitors to the front office during school hours. Inquiry and experiential learning. Inquiry and experiential learning can be done in lots of ways, from CTE spaces to VAPA. On the screen, you can see the future art studio for Cal Middle, upgrading their experience, but why limit to the classroom? Playgrounds need to be a fun experience. Our new kindergarten playground at Oak Ridge will allow students to run a farmer's market, own a restaurant, future animal supporter, or a first responder. Speaking of playgrounds, they need to be big, and they need to be fun. I've asked for the biggest for our students. These two also provide some new toys that our sites don't usually see, such as rope courses or even a third level, and the swings are coming back. They will have shade coverage and the pour-and-place fall material, no more bark. The two playgrounds pictured are for Chavez-Kimball and Oak Ridge. Also part of the fitness pedal, we are installing an old- Also part of the fitness pedal, we are installing an all-weather walking track, as I explained at Elder Creek, that allows, that will surround our new U-12 soccer fields. These will help invite community members to use our sites during evenings, encouraging wellness and neighborhood ownership in our schools. Pictures is the new track and field for Chavez-Kimball. Capitalizing on the great success of the central kitchen under Diana Flores, the following, the expectations outlined in the dining nutrition pedal, we will have large outdoor dining spaces for lunch and larger, more functional kitchens. Pictured in a new outdoor space attached is the MP building for the new Nicholas. Our new schools will have dedicated space for community space use only. It can be reserved through our civic permit process, has separate entrances, and can host health clinics, clothes and food closets, family support events, or adult education evening classes. The rendering and plan shown is the community room coming at Oak Ridge. Coming soon, facilities is going to be transparent. On our facilities website, we are building dashboards that should be coming out after the turn of the calendar, that will have project status with real-time updates available to the public, real-time project financials, and the current and short-term project schedules. Sustainability. One of the questions often asked is, great, you have a resolution. What is the action? A few weeks ago, our sustainability manager, Chamberlain Seacrest, shared that resolution with tangible goals and timelines. I can share the action is already in place. We are electrifying two kitchens this summer, and our three new schools will have incredibly low energy intensity ratings, especially for schools. We already have a sustainable native landscape design for the Albert Einstein modernization coming this summer. Solar is not far behind. Not only is the energy independence that it brings, but part of the shade goal shared in the resolutions. Time only allows us to expand on these great beginnings. Our goal in facilities is to build a resume that the community will trust, and you will want to allow us to continue on this work. As a reminder, our $750 million bond is already more than half encumbered into projects over the next four years, and we have a $4.4 billion
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
We do not.
We do not. Board members, please hop in. I know that everybody is loving this presentation right now.
No, thanks.
So we're going, Member Villa.
Obviously, this, like he said, it's mind-blowing. I'm so, so happy to see all of these projects being completed. I remember when we talked about the pedals and that whole process in 2021, it was overwhelming at that time to think about what was going to happen in the future, and to drive by the schools now and see the construction taking place. Yeah, it's amazing, and I cannot thank you guys enough, the whole team, for what you're doing at our school sites. It is truly changing our students' lives, our communities, just to have those open spaces. I think laundry room was in one of them. Remember that conversation?
Absolutely, yep.
I mean, that is just, those little things that you guys took the time and you listened to the community of what they needed to have on our school sites is amazing. I'm so thankful. So.
I appreciate you saying that. When Mr. Browning and I go do our community events, and the community is voting and picking these items, they vote, and the kids, remember Rhodes was with us on Tuesday at Chavez-Kimball, and the kids got to see the results of their voting for the playground structures, and they were jumping around and just excited. And we didn't, we brought them ideas, and they helped make the choice.
I love that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Member Coyada?
So I've said it before, just want to say it every time. Thank you so much to staff for just doing such amazing work and really delivering on probably more than anyone in Sacramento would have thought when they were running all these bonds that we were going to get. You know, it speaks to our students, it also speaks to our community, that we invest in our educational spaces to show that we value our students, we value our kids, we value our community. There's so much great work here, I can't even get into it. I just have to say, the picture of Caroline Wenzel's security fence doesn't do it justice. That new fence completely changed Greenhaven. I mean, you're driving down, and it's beautiful now, and it gave a little more space to the schools, more secure, better points of entry, but also it's just a beacon in our neighborhood that, hey, we value education, we value this elementary school. I also want to give a big thanks to the voters of Sacramento for continuing to show your commitment to our educational system and to the spaces where our children learn. These investments, this is building community for us, and it goes further by the fact that we have now reciprocated that by providing community spaces. And really, just such amazing work. So thank you so much to you and everyone else here in the district and to the community of Sacramento.
Absolutely.
Look forward to more work like this.
Thank you, Member Coyada. Member Pritchett?
I think, Member Villa, the nail in the head, mind-blowing. Seeing these photos is just really amazing. When we put the teams together working on Measure H, I never thought that, I couldn't even imagine that we would be seeing this. We were walking around, knocking on doors, talking to people. I was out there with Mr. Browning. He was my teammate out there knocking on doors, or I should say, where's Waldo? Because he was dressed up like Waldo. Where's Waldo? Knocking on doors. This just surpasses what I could even imagine, what we would have thought, right? And so just, it almost brings tears to my eyes of like, just of what we would have thought. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that, from the very beginning, of what we thought. We didn't even think that Measure H would pass when we were talking about it. We were thinking, oh, boy, do we really think that we could put this bond? Do we really think it would pass? And it did. It did, right? And then we were like, wow, we could do this, right? And then now, think the things that we're doing with it, right? So just thank you to the staff that continues working on it, and just, just thank you.
Members Segura?
I just want to recognize, like, the active change that you guys are bringing to these school campuses. It's going, like, creating this dynamic and stimulating environment for these students to learn in. It's going to immensely help so incredibly for every single one of these students' lives, and that work that you guys have been putting in through all this time is so appreciated from every single student and every single community member who is being, who is seeing this change and seeing how the campuses are developing over the years. So it's just, it's great. Thank you.
Appreciate you saying that.
Okay, Chris, the work that you guys are doing is amazing, but really, what we're looking at is this idea of, you know, when communities have things done to them, it's often seen as violence. When communities have things done with them, they're seen as liberation. And I think that not only you guys are doing facilities work, you guys are doing liberation work, and it's very beautiful to see. You see it with the students at the school site, when they're actually excited about facilities plans, and they're jumping up. That shows the engagement. But also, I'll take it a little step deeper into, like, South Sacramento. Literally, what residents in South Sacramento, residents and families really want to see is tangible and visible changes in their community. And these tangibles and visible changes that you're giving them, that we, as a board, we are putting into play in the policy, it's beyond amazing, and this is going to change generations. It's going to change neighborhoods' landscape for generations, and this is the type of work, that's why I call you guys liberator work, because this is what you guys are doing for our communities. Once again, I'm super excited about the work, and I look forward to doing more. This was an informational item, so we will see you back, hopefully for some action next year.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, so guys, we are going to go into Board Communications, Item 12.0, and mine will be very brief. This weekend, we are having two events in Area 5. One is at Burbank High School with Assembly Member Stephanie Nguyen. Previously, Assembly Member Cooper had turkey giveaways, giving away about 2,000 turkeys on Saturday. Starts at 10:00. Assembly Member Nguyen has continued that, so we'll be out at Burbank High School from 10:00 to 12:00, giving out turkeys. It's usually about 2,000 turkeys that they give out. But then directly after that, my office, in collaboration with Chef Mike and Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center, we are doing dinners for a community in the Shining Star, previously known as G Parkway Complex. All, in that complex, all of those students are also serviced by Parkway Elementary School. And so we'll be out there from 2:00 to 4:00, serving hot meals to families, so that they can have, families can have a great Thanksgiving meal a little bit early. So that wraps up my thing. So all Saturday, all Thanksgiving, if you guys want to stop by Burbank or G Parkway, Shining Star, we would love to have you guys out. Now, we're going to go to Member Report. Student Member Report.
Yeah, okay, so just, I'll go over SAC real quick. We've been going through, we've started the process of sorting through our info from the surveys that we've released to the high schools. We got a lot of responses, which is great. We love to see that. Beyond that, I am, I'm looking at your guys', the listening sessions that you guys have been doing, which are great and fantastic. I do encourage the outreach and more publicity towards those sessions, just especially towards the student populations at the schools that you're going to, because from talking to different students from those different schools, they are unaware of the listening sessions, and I know that they would like the opportunity to be able to speak at those listening sessions. So encouraging the publicity of those, just so to bring awareness that they are happening, because these are great resources for the entire community, to get those perspectives in. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with you. Do we have any other people who would like to share, Members? Member Villa?
I just wanted to say thank you to the community who, we had a coat drive, coat drive, excuse me, in our district here at Serna, and I checked as of this afternoon, and I was told in capital letters, we had hundreds of jackets donated to the district, and that will be provided to school sites of our students who will need it the most. And this is, you know, something that I talked to the superintendent about. I was really concerned that we didn't have anything put in place, and we really needed to make sure all of our kiddos stay warm this winter. So thank you so much to everyone who has donated coats. Everybody is very, very thankful, and again, hundreds, that's something that we're very thankful to have. So enjoy your Thanksgiving with your families.
Wonderful. Member Phillips?
I just want to give some advice. We are doing many great things, making a lot of changes, doing better for our students and our community. But I wanted to read something that kind of hit me today, because I'm sharing from a personal realm. It's advice from a glacier, and it's coming from a glacier instead of the iceberg that people talk about, because there's so much on the underside of an iceberg that you don't know what it is. We are a glacier here at Sacramento City Unified. You see all of us. We are on top of the ground. So advice from a glacier, as we move forward with all this positive change, we here at Sacramento City Unified School District, we choose to carve our own path, go slow, channel our strengths, smooth the way for others, keep moving forward, avoid meltdowns, and be cool. And I say this because a lot of times, we have conversations up here, and it's all congratulatory, and it's all beautiful, and as a social worker, I look at the world differently. So I do realize that change is good, it is necessary, it is hard, and sometimes even maddening work. But there's recognition of our goal to be the ever-determined, ever-moving revolution that provides our students, staff, and families with the ability to be in a district that is a safe place to be a person of color, to express their individual identities, to express collective identities, religious beliefs and values. This freedom that we support is and will be a continuation of improving student outcomes by hearing out the communities, as we've been doing with our listening sessions, hearing their hopes and dreams for district improvement and growth. To the multitude of souls here at Sacramento City Unified School District and its community, who are the driving force, the glacier, we are here to do better, and we will continue to do better for you. So thank you all for being the inertia that drives this glacier.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Villa?
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to hop back in. I thought, thank the community, but I really wanted to thank our staff, too. My deepest apologies for not doing that the first time around, but I know how much work has been put into this project in so many different departments and sites, every team member. I really appreciate you guys jumping on this and taking, you know, so much work on top of your everyday tasks. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Jean?
So I just wanted to follow up on all of our listening sessions that we did and give a huge thanks to all the community members that found time in their schedules to come out and chat with us. It was truly an honor to be able to hear the passion for our students and our communities, and the education, and the partnership of us all coming together for that educational space for our kiddos. I also want to give a huge shout-out to all of the staff, to interim Superintendent Allen, for helping us get those scheduled in the two-week period, and then for every school site, making sure that we were able to have the conversation, to have the mics, to have the papers, to have the scripts, to have the sign-in sheets. Just all those little details did not go unnoticed. And to all of the staff that actually came and participated in the conversations as well. It's the first time we, we as this board have done this, and I've been told it's the first time we've been doing listening sessions in a really long time, and I look forward to continuing that practice, making it where this is just our starting point, not our one-and-done. So I'm really excited about what the more continual space of listening can do for the work that we do as a board.
Thank you so much. It's only up from here, Member Jean, only up from here. So, man, with that being said, let's go to Item 13.0, Consent Agenda. So moves, second. Roll calls, student preferential?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Coyada?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys, for passing that. And now, our future board meetings is December 14th and January 18th. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, and thirds, and fifths? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I told you, guys.